It is four o'clock and this meeting will come to order. Our roll call. President Glass, President Frazee Odison, Trustee Hamley and Trustee Robinson are here. As we discussed last week, Trustee Blank has given her resignation. So our, our legal counsel will be participating later. I'm actually, it's good, please. And thank you. Anyway, our legal counsel will be participating later via electronic means. And now we will go to our Idaho Commission for Library Board of Trustees training by Clay Ritter.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for welcoming me to your board meeting today. We are going to do a training on three different topics today. As I had discussed with Rochelle, the first thing you have in front of you is a gray folder that was on top of the slideshows. That is just a rundown we like to bring that talks about what we at the Commission for Libraries do, our Lilly databases, our different programs and services. There are a couple trustee handouts in there, but kind of just a rundown of what we have commissioned to. Just to give you kind of a basis, I always like to start these training sessions by thinking you as board members for serving your community. The library is an important part of your community. You've provided a very important government service to your community in expanding the knowledge of your community members. And I know that none of you get paid for being here. So thank you for taking the time and care to be here and serve your community. My name is Clay Ritter. I work at the Idaho Commission for Libraries as a public library consultant, which means if you're a public library, all the way from Bonners Ferry down to Preston, I'm the person that you talk with when you would like to know about how public libraries operate, any trustee best practices, any library operations best practices, anything like that. To give you some background on who I am. I grew up in Choschoa, Idaho.
Need to turn it on.
Oh, is, need to turn it on, sorry. There, is that better? Okay, perfect. To continue, I grew up in Choschoa, Idaho, which is a town of about, when I was there, about 1,200 people. I remember being excited when we got that fourth digit on our population sign outside of the town. My graduating class was 26 people. Thirteen of us had been together since kindergarten. And I grew up on a cattle ranch north of there. My first library job was in Richfield, Idaho, which you probably also never heard of, which has 450 people, three bars, one grocery store and no gas stations. So, you know, I'm very familiar with Idaho. I've served as library director for quite a while before taking this job. So I'm very happy to be here and I'm very passionate about what we do at the Commission. Which is, we assist libraries to build the capacity to best serve their communities, which means we are not the library police. My boss is the deputy state librarian, but they give him neither a badge nor a gun. There is no enforcement here. We're merely here to help you as trustees fulfill your roles according to what it says in statute. And we're here to help your employees, normally made through your director, help run your library efficiently to provide the best service to your community that you possibly can. Now, we are first going to talk about libraries and public records. You, as trustees, create public records. You're doing so right now. I'm part of your public record. Because we're in a meeting and minutes have to be taken as a public record. It is your duty, under the powers and duties of Idaho Code, to maintain legal records of all board business. Now, under your records, you have a few that you have to maintain forever. These are all your board business, which are your minutes. Your minutes are a forever document. You have to keep those in perpetuity. They are a permanent record. Your audit reports, which are your comprehensive financials that you do at the end of the year. Your, any election documents that you have. Your policies, not all policies forever, but your current policy manual is a permanent record. And your asset ownership documents on all current assets. Now, that's a pretty short list of records. And you all know that you have many, many, many more records than that. And the question I often get here when it comes to records is, well, what about everything else? Well, that's a long list. And you don't have all the room in the world. So keeping these records would be quite a chore. So it's up to you. You are the elected representatives of your community. You are here to govern the library. You creating a policy about these records that says how long we keep them and what we do with them when they're being disposed of is a good practice to have. So when you go through some libraries, for instance, if you are participating in the E-Rate program through the Universal Services Administration, you're required to keep that paperwork for 10 plus years. Or 10 years after the end of that fiscal year, I believe, is the, is the correct wording on there. So some libraries just keep that forever. Others go, year 11, we throw it out. Many of the things on here are, I recommend that you only keep them as long as they're administratively valuable, which is a good term to have in your records policy. Because if it's not administratively valuable, why are you keeping it? Things like your accession records, your library publications, some libraries like to keep those forever. But things like library card applications, if somebody passes away or moves away, they are, their card is no longer valid. Many libraries have it set up that after card expiration, 36 months after that, those records go away. That's pretty much an industry standard, is three years after card expiration, the patron records go away. Many systems actually purge it automatically. And your staff will be able to talk more about that with you. Circulation records, your statistical reports, program records, those are all things that administratively valuable. Because oftentimes, things like a statistical report, not your yearly report, because that gets kept forever by the central government. But your monthly statistical reports and stuff are often part of your minutes. So, and the list just goes on from there. Your procedures are obviously replaceable when you get a new procedure or change that procedure. Reference records, tallies, things like that.
Clay.
Yes.
Going back to the slide before that, asset ownership documents on all current assets. We talked about capitalized items, property and equipment.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're talking about anything that has title.
Okay.
So, so buildings.
Vehicles?
Buildings, vehicles, yes. Yeah. Anything depreciable.
Okay.
Yes.
Other question. On the records where you're going through your list on the slide before.
Yes.
Are electronic records, you know, PDF files, what, what kind of?
It does not specify a format.
On, on the web?
Yeah, it, it, it can be on, it can be held digitally or physically.
Is there, is there anything physically, maybe these?
They are required to keep physically?
The titles and the forever?
I, that, that's completely up to you. I, I am not aware of a, of a title that would be considered official if it's kept digitally, because you can't take a picture of a, of a deed and, and take it into the assessor's office. But, you know, if many, many, many places are switching over to digital, because digital storage is much cheaper when you're talking about converting it into a PDF or, or a Word document or something like that. You can keep a whole lot more records on a USB hard drive than you can in a filing cabinet in a room of your library that may be to be used for patrons, so.
Yep. Are these incumbent on the staff? Because we don't get to the level as trustees of keeping track of titles for?
It's incumbent upon you to have a policy that directs your director and staff on how to, how to treat those records.
Okay, we may or may not have one, okay. I don't know.
Yeah. And, and that's where your role comes in, is creating this policy and this schedule that says, okay, staff, this is how we dispose of things, this is what we keep. You know, here's the schedule for things that you keep. So for instance, like grant paperwork. When you sign a grant agreement, many times they will say, you have to keep the, the records of this for X number of years. What I tell libraries when they ask about that is, I recommend in your, in your schedule of records retention, you have, we will keep it for whatever the grant agreement says plus one year. And that tells the public, you got a grant for something three years ago. The grant agreement said, we're going to keep this for three years, we're going to have it for an additional year. After four years, it's going away, whether it's shred. You know, some larger libraries, they call in a shred truck, have a day, and they get rid of everything that they don't need, or whether they dispose of them incrementally, however you want to do that. And that's all defining your policies. So as soon as you tell staff what to do with those records, they need to be following your policy and your schedule. Yeah.
How, how long has this requirement been there and who made the requirement? Is this Idaho statute?
This is Idaho statute, yes. Which we're getting to right now with the Public Records Manual that the Attorney General's Office has on their website. It has a wonderful frequently asked questions section, a list of requirements that you have, everything like that. So while the Attorney General's website won't say you have to keep accession records for this long, it will tell you the things you do have to keep, which we listed earlier. It will say those are permanent records. So between this, which tells you what you have to keep and how to dispose of those things and some common things, this will also tell you how to provide those records to the public when they request them. Because that is the biggest thing. We're a very, very transparent state in Idaho. As government officials, what we do is transparent to the public. You can't keep things hidden unless they're very, very tailored specifically within code, which we'll get at in a little bit. But everything you do as board members is transparent to the public. Everything the library does, it does on the taxpayer's dime. So the, the taxpayer has a right to know what the library is doing. And that comes through in these records. And that's the basic philosophy behind this, this open meetings law and ethics in Idaho government. But I would recommend if you have any detailed questions to consult with the Public Records Manual. If the Public Records Manual does not have an answer to your question, oftentimes you can use the contact form on the Attorney General's website. And they're pretty good at answering the questions you may have when it comes to public records. And if you have problems with somebody with a government entity supplying a public record to you, you can also contact the Attorney General's Office to see if that record is possibly exempt. Now, inside of Idaho Code 74-102, to be specific, 10A says that you may charge your actual cost for records requests that exceed two hours of labor or for copying, past copying the first 100 pages of paper records that are requested. So if somebody comes in and says, I, I want to, all of your receipts from every book you purchased for the last 20 years, the staff would compile that and go, well, this is going to take a lot of time. And you're able to charge your actual costs for that. We're a government service, not in the business of making a profit, so it's actual costs. And you can break those down in your public records request policy as this is what our actual cost is.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that person supposed to pay before they get there?
Yes, you may give them an estimate and tell them what it is going to cost before starting the process. And that 74-102, this is step 10. You've got, it's a very long statute and it details specifically the procedure for records requests that you need. So this is just the snippet I like to pull as far as what you can charge and what, and you can't charge for under this. So if somebody comes in and goes, I need the minutes for the last meeting, you're required to provide those regardless of if you have to copy them or whatever, because that's less than your two hours of labor or your 100 pages. And people also are not allowed to piecemeal requests. So if they come in and say, I want all the minutes from 1977, then they come back and go, I want all the minutes from 1978. I want all the minutes from 1979. They aren't allowed to break it up to avoid that 100-page limit as long as they're within the same scope. Yeah.
What's wrong with giving the public a PDF file or Excel file or something instead of pages?
Yeah, nothing at all.
The pages are basically the cost of copying.
Right, right. But there's nothing wrong with giving them a digital file. Some public records requesters will request it in a format though. So they'll request it to be printed. Which if you have the capability, you will provide obviously. And that's where the 100 pages comes in. Further on in that statute, there actually is a definition for the digital and a requirement on there if it's costing you money to provide that record.
To clarify, like it does take staff time to assemble even the digital files? So, yeah, so it's not just the paper?
That's time.
Right.
Cost of the paper.
Right.
And one of the big things to remember about a, a request for a record is, if you don't keep it, you don't have it. Like, like if somebody comes in and goes, I need an Excel spreadsheet of every book titled that the library has purchased since 1963, you don't have that record. It's not in an Excel file, every book lined out in the specific format. But you can go, okay, we have our, we have our financial audits, we have what we've spent on books, we have our accession records. Obviously, we can pull stuff that we still have in the catalog, but you can't create something that you don't have. So the, the records request also needs to be reasonable about the records you have. And you aren't required to spend staff time creating a record for the public that you don't have. Because if, if you're keeping all of your accession records since 1963 in an Excel file, well, good. But that's a lot of staff time that you're spending there that could be used in serving the public. So most places don't keep those. Transparency in government, this is the big one. This is the keystone of your records, your ethics and your open meetings law. If the, your decisions aren't transparent, not only are you breaking public trust, but those decisions never happened legally and could lead to larger problems down the road. So for instance, with your records, if you are just disposing of records all over the place without any policy to guide you and you violate that, you aren't being very transparent with your taxpayers. You are eliminating records that could be viewed, that could be considered permanent or should have a shelf life for them to view. So you want to be very careful about hiding things. If a decision is to be made and it affects the public, which everything that you are deciding in every meeting affects the public in some way or other, they have a right to know. And as voters, they also should know what's going on here because that will help them understand why you need their support and help down the road. Okay, now, we're getting to the library records that are exempt from disclosure. Many entities in Idaho do not have any records that are exempt from disclosure whatsoever. Libraries are one of the few. And libraries are listed in two different sections of 74-108. Number four is the records of a library, which when examined alone or when examined with other public records, would reveal the identity of the library patron checking out, requesting or using an item from a library. What people check out from libraries, nobody else's business. What people requested the libraries, nobody else's business. What people pick off the shelf and read at the library is nobody else's business, according to Idaho Code. And the material of a library, museum or archive that has been contributed by a private person to the extent of any limitations that is a condition of the contribution. So libraries are allowed to accept anonymous donations. Is basically what that is. And libraries get anonymous donations all the time, whether it's a box of books or cash or whatever. Yes.
So can a parent request records of what their minor checked out? Or is that off limits?
Is.
So if they, if they, if they have a minor card and they?
So, so if, if they are a library patron and it is only their name on there, I don't know. I would say contact your legal counsel, because this just says library patron checking out. Many places have gone to linked cards just for that reason, or a family card for that reason. Because if you are issuing a minor, a card, and theirs is the only name on there, that is their record.
Well, both the parent and the minor are patrons.
Right, but if, if you have a card and you're 16 and you're emancipated and you have the same last name and your parent has a card and they're, and they're 40, that this person is emancipated and, and legally considered an adult.
Don't confuse them, I want to talk about emancipated, I'm just saying.
No, I'm, but if I'm.
15-year-old checks out a book and the parent asks for the record.
That would be something that you would have to talk to your legal counsel about in each specific instance. Because if they're a library patron, Idaho Code is telling us that those records could be examined and could tell another library patron what somebody's checking out. And that is a good time for me to bring up, I'm not a lawyer. I don't provide legal advice whatsoever. I just provide information and best practices. Please consult with your legal counsel anytime you have something like that when it comes to interpretation. Because your legal counsel will know the case law behind it, what has been decided, all of the research that direction. Okay, Freedom of Information Act requests. I get asked about this a lot and, you know, Idaho Public Records Act has all the guidance you need. It is a, it is a very thorough statute that lists everything that you need. My only advice to you is to have a procedure in place firmly and make sure all the staff are trained in your policy and your procedure when it comes to Freedom of Information Act requests. The last thing you want to happen is to have a policy or to not have a policy or a procedure in place and for somebody to come in and your staff to not know what to do in that instance. This is going to aid you in transparency so much to have your policies in place so that your administration can create a procedure for staff to follow and get them trained up on how to proceed should anybody request records from them. I like to tell a story at this point about me personally. When I started in Richfield, our yearly budget was about $12,000. My monthly, my, my monthly salary was $400 a month. My third week on the job, I received a call from somebody who went, yeah, I'm going to need a, a record of all the books you've purchased in the last 10 years. Could you send that to me? You have three days. And I went, what? And they went, yeah, I, I work for a place that is aggregating data on what books libraries are purchasing. I'm in Florida, you have three days. We didn't have, we didn't have a policy, didn't have a procedure. I didn't know what to do other than to tell you that in the back of the library, ever since Amazon had become a thing, remember those square little slips you used to get in an Amazon box that are about this big? There were stacks of them like this that were rubber banded together, sitting on a shelf in the back room. And the very first thing I did was pick up the phone call, pick up the phone and start calling people and going, what do I do? And they went, well, you don't have the record in electronic format and it's going to take you this, you know, you don't have a scanner, you don't have any of these things. So here's what you can do and here's what you can't do. You do have the record and they could compute the record, but it's going to cost money for them to receive the record, because who knows how many staff hours it was going to take for me to copy those on our very, very ancient Canon copier and then try and digitize them or mail them. So I contacted the person back and went, would you like an estimate for the time it would take me and the cost to the library to produce these records? And they went, oh, it'll cost? No, thanks, that's okay. I was hoping you'd just have them an Excel spreadsheet, which is why I always say the Excel of all the books you've obtained since 1963. So the very next board meeting, I went to my library board and I went, we need a policy. Because I don't want to have a panic attack when I pick up that phone and somebody wants those and all we have are these square little Amazon slips and they, and we created a policy and guess what was in that records retention schedule? Those little receipts were not administratively valuable at all, longer than 30 days, and we got rid of them. Because you only need them to confirm what's in the order and that the total matches your credit card statement and then you can get rid of those. So having the policy, having the procedure, very, very important. Causes your staff a whole lot less panic attacks when they get a request like that.
And so therefore the library didn't have records of what they had bought in the past? So if somebody called in, they wouldn't get it?
Right, we, we did not keep that record because the, because we have a catalog. We have what we have. It's already listed, it's just not in that specific format. So if somebody requested a record of all the items held in the library catalog, perfect, we have that. It's probably going to be a large printout. It's not going to be nearly as large as the Amazon receipt printout would have been. Let, you know, scanning those in, copying them, everything like that. It would be much smaller to print out your catalog, which just has, you know, whatever information they requested, name, author, you know, et cetera. So, A, I'm not spending all of my time producing a record that we didn't need. And B, there's a better format to provide it to the public anyway.
And to be clear, the catalog wouldn't show what was bought or gotten rid of. It would just show what the, the library presently has.
Correct, correct. So then you would compile that with your reading schedule, your, you know, your collection development policy, everything like that.
Okay, thank you.
But it was a record ultimately we didn't need, so we moved on from there. Okay, there has been some legislation this year, specifically House Bill 588, which changed the extension time of a records request to 21 days for non-Itoha residents. It used to be 10 working days following the person's request. And now it says 10 working days following the person's request if such a person is an Idaho resident and no later than 21 working days following a request from a non-resident. So you have three working days to grant or deny their request of the date of the receipt for examination or copying. But if you need an extension, you can add, you can say, we need an extension to produce these records. That's 10 days for Idaho residents, 21 days for non-Itoha residents. And again, this is all, as of next week, this will all be updated on the, on the Idaho Legislature website in the code book, so the wording that will be there. It is not, because this does not take effect until July 1st, so, yes.
I, I guess I'm not asking if you know the reason, but I wonder what the legislature thought. Are they keeping, is this counting mailing time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I don't see what difference.
But.
Yeah, but it's in counting mailing.
Yeah, if, if, if somebody in, in New Jersey is requesting a, a record and it gets there on the 11th day after the extension. Yeah.
So it's not the postmarked date? It has to be delivered by?
I, I believe you're required to produce it, so. So yeah, it was, yeah. If you're emailing them, yes, you know, it shouldn't make any difference whatsoever, but.
I, I remember that you're not a lawyer, but what if there was somebody that was abusing requests? Is there recourse to get them to stop or?
No, your, your, your business is transparency. That's, that's what it is for, for all of us. I, I like to tell people that as public servants, everything we do is under the public eye when we're acting officially as it should be and there, and it, if people are abusing it, then you just have to continue to follow the statute. That's, you know, and. That's, you know, and. The, the best way that people have found to combat that is to be as transparent as possible digitally. Oh, you would like our minutes, they're all on our website. Oh, you would, you would like this rec, well, they're all there, here you go.
So it's okay to tell them to look it up if it's available?
Yeah. Yeah. If they, if they require you to print them out, you need to produce that, but most people, um, especially, um. Those who may want a lot of records, um, normally they'll, they'll call in and, and you'll, and they'll go, I want. The last ten years of your board meeting minutes because I don't like what's going on at your library and you go, well, they're all on our website and they go, okay, thank you. Sometimes they hang up the phone angrily after that, but they still thank you and, and they have received their records request. Yes.
You didn't mention it, but what about requests for emails? So if somebody wants.
Your, your correspondence is also open under the public eye.
Or is there some limitation that can they ask for the last year's emails between two people or?
If it's not on your records retention schedule, they, it's as long as they request them for provided that two hours of staff time. Or the hundred pages mark is not met. So if somebody wants three years of your emails from between two board members and. It's about your capacity as trustees, then yeah, that's. You know, it, it, it all falls down to you're acting, you're acting within the scope of being a trustee and that was correspondence between two trustees, yeah. Now, things that have nothing to do with that are not part of the public record. So if you're just saying, hey, you know, there, there's barbecue next or my kid's birthday is next weekend, you know, obviously you know you're invited, cause. Outside of sitting at this table, we're, we're friends and, you know, you're invited and, and we're gonna have a great time and. Oh, did you catch the game last week? Stuff like that's not within the, the scope of what you're doing here. You know, but if it's, hey, you know, I wanna talk about our records retention policy. You know, these are my thoughts on it, um, A, you know, be careful about getting into that deliberation. But, um, that's within the scope of your work here, so that is a public record. Okay. That was. You and records and we will move on to public library finances. We gotta save a lot of time here because I don't have to introduce myself again. Or tell you that we assess libraries to build the capacity to best serve their communities. Okay. This is something that falls under your border rules, uh, policies and your legislative authority. So you all know that you're governed under Idaho statute Title thirty-three, chapter twenty-seven. Which governs the operation of district libraries. And included in that are some of your powers and duties that directly correspond to your financial powers. Here at the library and there are many of them. So you establish policies for the administration operation and use of library or libraries under your control as a board. So, um, administration operation and use of the library are all parts of the financial piece of things. You establish an annual budget and oversee the financial management of the library district. You establish policies for the purchase and distribution of library materials. And then on the next slide, you invest any funds of the district in accordance with public depository law and other applicable state and federal laws. You pay the actual and necessary expenses of members of library staff when on business of the district. And the last thing that I have highlighted here under yours is individual trustees shall have no authority to make decisions about the policies of the library. Except if specifically authorized by the board, which means an individual trustee does not have the power to set a. A purchase policy or an interpretation of your policies. That needs to happen in the meeting. Now, moving on to your library director. The library director shall acquire library materials, equipment and supplies. However, the board shall fix and pay employee salaries and compensation. Yes.
You, you moved on before.
No, you're all good.
So back on, uh, powers and duties, the first slide on, you didn't highlight. G paragraph G.
Yeah.
Wire. I don't know why you didn't.
Own and hold real and personal property. Yeah.
And, and. And to, uh, let's see. And to ensure real and personal property.
Correct.
It's, it's to provide insurance, isn't that what it is? I mean, it doesn't say anything about liability.
Um, so.
Only, is it only for ensuring?
So to, to get some context with this one in thirty-three twenty-seven, you have to look at thirty-three twenty-six. Which does not give that power specifically to city library trustees. That power is get, is granted by the city. So there, there, they were written together. But they're separate, so this power is separate from the city one, which says with the pow, with, with the approval of city council. To ensure the real and personal property of the library. So this one says you ensure the real and personal property of the district, which would be you purchase insurance in general. For.
What, what about liability insurance specifically? It doesn't say liability.
It does not, you are correct, it does not.
Is it, is liability insurance included?
That would be a good question for your attorney.
Is it listed in that other?
No, it is not. It does not say liability insurance, it's to ensure, so the extent of that insurance, um. Is up to you, um, and something best discussed with your legal counsel when it comes to that. Um, liability insurance being the most common type of insurance, that's the most common type that most districts have, but, um, again. That's up to you as the board to decide and in consultation with your legal counsel.
But. Do we have the power to do it, to buy liability insurance, or is that committing more power?
Yeah, you have the power to ensure the real and personal property of the district.
But that's not liability insurance.
Well.
That's property insurance.
Well, is it real and personal property of the district?
The property insurance is.
Right.
Liability of. You know, of, of, of risk and everything.
So there, there, you are given that power, but let's go on to the next slide and I'll tell you, uh, where you're given the other power. And it's on the next slide under O. Exercise other powers not inconsistent with law necessary for the effective use and management of the library. Which is one of the broadest powers given to anybody in Idaho code. No, no, nowhere in, in, um, that I have found, again, consult with your lawyer, I'm not a lawyer. Anywhere that I've seen in Idaho code says that it is illegal for anybody to purchase liability insurance. On government property, so. Is it, is it necessary for the effective use and management of the library? I would say that, you know. Be, having, uh, a big risk for your library could, could be problematic, so. That is up to you to decide as the trustees. And then we cover the, the director, director team, um, you know, you all know you're responsible for fixing and paying employee salaries. And then we get into the treasurer and clerk. Um, you know, there, there's a lot here, they'll be bonded, um. You have to appoint some qualified person. Now, when it says qualified person, I like to tell people this. It says some qualified person, those qualifications are not listed anywhere else. You decide who's qualified. Now, if you are, for instance, um, cause we like to use extremes for examples. If you are going into the local kindergarten classroom and going, Billy can count to ninety-nine, he's our new treasurer. Your taxpayers could argue that that person is not qualified to be appointed as your treasurer. So, you know, it, it, it ends up being one of those good faith, reasonable expectations things. Um, for some qualified person. Many, many, many smaller library districts in Idaho, one of their trustees is, is appointed as the treasurer every year. They don't have the money to hire an accountant, they don't have the resources, some of them, there's just not somebody in their entire area that. You know, is an accountant, so they go with the best person they can find. And normally that's the person most skilled at running QuickBooks, so, um, it, it is up to you to decide, um. Who that is and they may or may not be a member of the Board of Trustees. Um, but the big one that I've highlighted down below is. The treasurer sells, shall supervise all monies raised for the library district by taxation or received by the district from any other sources. And shall supervise all disbursements of funds of the district by order of the Board of Trustees. The reason that that is highlighted in red is. If you haven't ordered them to disperse funds, they should not be dispersing funds. If you are telling them, hey, it's part of your job to do payroll every two weeks, they should be doing payroll every two weeks. If you tell them it's your job to pay the power bill every month when it comes in and we will prove that, that's up to you and your financial policy. That's up to you and your job description for your treasurer or your business manager or whoever you have doing these things. But you are the ones that are issuing these orders, um. We're gonna get into some best practices here, this is the end of the, of the statute side of things, as you can see, it's pretty open. Cause it allows you as the trustees to decide your best way forward, what works for you, what doesn't work for you. How are you going to move forward? What should you put in your policy? What should you not put in your policy? All of those things are consideration by you because you know your library best and how it is going to operate best and most efficiently for your taxpayers.
But when you said you'll need to be a member of the board to be the treasurer, really, the wording probably is you don't need to be a trustee. Because when you become the treasurer, you are a member of the board, an ex officio member of the board, if I understand correctly. So you may not, you may, you don't have to necessarily be a trustee. Or they can be a trustee as a treasurer.
So they aren't an ex officio member of the board, they're just gonna, they're just an appointed official. They may or may not be a member of the Board of Trustees means they're just somebody else. Some li, some library districts, they appoint a treasurer and that treasurer is, is required to show up to X. Board meetings or in, I know of a couple instances where they aren't required to show up to the meetings, they're required to report to the. Library director who passes the treasurer report on that. It, it is, it is completely up to the board as to how that works. They, correct, they are definitely a non-voting member of the board. The only people allowed to vote in a board meeting are the five trustees who are elected in the library district. Or appointed because you have a vacancy until May of twenty twenty-five. So they, they can or cannot, but they are, they do not become a member of this body. The director is listed in Idaho code as being the, the secretary of the board. So they become part of this body in essence, but they're still a non-voting member. They just are here and are allowed to be in executive session unless you're discussing them directly, basically.
I was gonna ask that because usually executive session is for members of the board. If you're saying the treasurer is not a member of the board and this, is it treasurer supposed to be an executive session?
No, it, it does not give them anything like that in Idaho code, it does not list that anywhere.
Not required, but by invitation.
Yeah, yeah, you could, you could invite anybody if you're executive session, that's up to you guys.
But I think our bylaws where CLN says the treasurer is a board, or is part of the board, not. Our bylaws can say.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's where it becomes from, per, per CLN.
I'd have to go back and.
Yeah.
It's only two pages long, okay?
Yeah. So, um, you know, that, that is a good, um, segue into something, um, that I like to tell people when it, when it comes to the law. Is you, you can, you can't broaden something that's been restricted already, but you can restrict something that's been broadened. So in this instance, you're creating something that says, yes, they are required to be here, they are an ex officio member of the board, they do sit in. They, they can't, they are just as a standard invited into our executive sessions, you've created that. And that's perfectly okay. But if it said they, they are not allowed to be a member of the Board of Trustees, you can just say, well, our policy says they are a member of the Board of Trustees, so. You aren't violating anything there. Now we're gonna talk about some fiscal oversight. When it comes to your budgeting and finance. So you approve the bills. You ensure appropriate internal accounting controls. You provide for the conduct of the financial audit. And you should be reviewing the monthly treasurer's report. And we're gonna get into each of these sections on the next slides. So your approval of bills. I consider it a best practice that each trustee should have information available to them at every meeting that includes a list of all expenditures. Through the period from the previous meeting to the current meeting. This information should be distributed prior to the meeting and reconciled with current financial statements.
So we should have a detailed expenditure list of everything it was.
Uh, the, the, the detail is up to you, whether it's broken down by your budget line, whether it's broken down by transaction. Um, that is up to you guys.
That, and that would be our financial statements.
Yes, correct. Um, I do recommend that, um, when you are ensuring your internal controls, that you all. Have copies of bank statements, so you know what's in your accounts. Um, the, the reason for that is not to, um, create a lot more work for everybody. It is simply that, um, if somebody misses a zero somewhere. You have. Or currently four more sets of eyes on that going, oh, this, this was an error. Um. And it, it's just, the public has entrusted you to watch over their funds. You aren't disparaging anybody by taking that view very seriously and watching those funds very closely. You need to ensure your internal, internal controls. You should have multiple layers of oversight on all revenues and expenditures. This includes current financial statements, both internally and externally, external being those bank statements, internal being your summary of your accounts. That the trustees can reconcile, a list of current revenues and obligations should be provided, that's like your, uh, your year-to-date budget breakdown. Um, as well as current, yeah, as well as current budget breakdowns that show where the entity stands for the current fiscal year. Knowing where you're at, where you're headed, what your projections look like. You know, we're at the end of June now, so here in a few weeks, you'll have another big tax check rolling in. So you can see where you're sitting at as far as your cash balance, looking at that for your carry forward for your budget, things like that. Those are all things that, you know, you having direct eyes on these matters, it's very, very important. Conducting the financial audit, you have to follow Idaho code sixty-seven dash four fifty B. Says that if your expenditures are over a hundred fifty thousand, you must have a biannual independent audit. They exceed two hundred fifty thousand, you must have an annual independent audit. There are no requirements in Idaho code for entities with less than a hundred fifty thousand dollars in expenditures. Um, however, I do recommend that those entities, even though you are required to do yearly one. Do have an external audit schedule for the library funds. Internal audit should be conducted annually as well. Yes.
Should this, uh, annual external audit we had done or that we're required to do? Should that be, the whole thing be posted on the web or is it?
It's, it's a permanent public record.
Is, is it on the web for the public to look at? But normally we have. Up the full twenty-four or forty-page report on the web.
Not normally, this would be something new that we would do.
It's on the board that has, would have to be done or something.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can just have this conversation.
I'm reviewing the monthly treasurer report, um, should contain a budget versus actual summer summaries, a revenue and expenditure report. As well as summary check register with confirming bank statements. This allows the board to efficiently review the financial status of the library and provide public knowledge of the status of the library fund balances and current obligations. This allows the board to efficiently review the financial status of the library and provide public knowledge of the status of the library fund balances and current obligations. I realize you guys write a lot of checks every month. Realize you have a lot of expenditures every month. It's, it's a big job.
So this is saying that the board should be reviewing the copies of every check. Not just the.
Well, a check, check register with confirming bank statements.
Not, not the treasurer, but the board.
You don't do that.
I recommend it.
Is it required or?
It's not required. These are all recommendations. Some, some boards have a fiscal committee. But they have a couple of people who are very interested and, and knowledgeable about the financials and they have a a couple hour meeting with the treasurer every month and go through all of this stuff and, and then report back to the board. Some boards, it's the whole board that looks at it. And a lot of these are best practices, so. They realize that it's, it's a best practice, what, what people have the capacity for, what actually happens. If you're confident in your internal controls currently and and, and you're good with the way things are, that's up to you as a body to decide.
So who decides what's a best practice? Who's that?
So, so that best, best practices, that, that's something that I look at. I am, I am consistently reading policies of libraries nationwide. I'm looking what other libraries statewide do. I am trying to provide you the, when I say a best practice, I mean, if, if you all could spend all your time here at the library being a trustee, these are the things you should be doing. You all have lives outside of this. You all have jobs or, or other obligations. What you are able to do and what you can do are different from what I'm talking about. These things, when I say best practice, realize that I'm walking into places um which, you know, there was a library in the news. I don't know if you all saw that, that had about a quarter of a million dollars embezzled from them by their treasurer. This slideshow that you're viewing right now was a direct response to that. These are the things you need to do. This is why you have so many eyes on these things because one person having control of your finances is never okay. You delegating some of this authority to your director. You delegating some of this authority to a single board member or a committee. All those things are within your purview. I'm just telling you that, you know, that the hundred out of hundred on the quiz would be these things.
So I wouldn't, I heard you didn't say best practices. I'd say recommended or suggested or I have recommended.
Well, they're.
But, but the best practices to me infers we should be doing it.
Yeah, I, I.
Maybe we can't. I mean.
I firmly think you should be doing this.
That's unreasonable. To do.
Well, I, it, it really depends on how you how you manage that. Is, is this, is this what is most important to you? If you as a board member, this is your most important thing. This is what you're going to be doing to do the best. That's why I call them best practices.
Wanna say one thing. Um, there's a lot of best practice talk right now, but I also want us to keep in mind that we have had clean audits and that we have not had any findings or anything that has been troubling. So we just wanna remember that what we're currently doing is working for us with the staff and the time that we have.
Yeah, and if you're confident in your audits and everything's clean and you're good, great. If you aren't getting an, an independent audit every year, these are, these are definitely things I would say you need to be doing. Because you don't have that independent audit to fall back on. You don't have that internal audit, because I guarantee you guys are doing an internal audit probably more often than every, than annual, you know, all of those things. So it's really up to you to decide. Something I do strongly recommend though is that you have a purchasing policy. And this is one of those policies that says, you know, this is how purchasers are made for the library. These are, these are things that um how purchasing should be done. So whether if somebody wants to buy something, they have to go to their supervisor who passes that on to your financial department. Some purchasing policies have a, an amount that, okay, your children's programming person can spend up to a thousand dollars before they have to take it up to the director or take it to the business manager to decide on. Some policies don't have that at all. Cause everybody knows what their departmental budget is and they just follow their departmental budget. It really depends on how things work. Some small libraries, because of the small size of their budget, have limits in there on how much the director can spend in a single transaction before it needs to go before the board. It really depends on what you feel comfortable with and how you want to organize these things. Um, in the slideshow are a couple of um example purchasing policies um on how different libraries do their purchasing and procurement. You know, normally like these purchasing policies at their most bare bones say things like um you can't purchase real property without board approval. And others are like, you know, if you wanna spend more than a thousand dollars, it has to come before the board and we require this, this and this before we will approve it. Or if it's more than five thousand dollars, we want you to go to bid, even though that's lower than you know, what's required in Idaho code. Some places do that. Some places put those firmer restrictions on there. Others just go, it's up to staff. You have your budget. This is what you need to do. So again, ultimately it's up to you. Okay? Now we are on to open meeting law. Which I like to title, if you didn't post it, it didn't happen. So you're all fully aware, if you don't post up your meeting notice and agendas, it didn't happen. So how open meeting law affects your library? So we've talked to policies, we've talked to your legislative authority and public records and open meeting law kind of touches on all three of those aspects. Again, you're governed by Idaho code, section thirty-three, chapter twenty-seven. In case you can't tell, I'm, I normally do one of these at a time and not three, so um. You can find the open meeting law manual on the Attorney General's website. It is a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful resource to have. I recommend that you all um are familiar with where to, where to locate it. Yeah, it gets updated um normally yearly, um and the current version is the twenty twenty-four version up, I believe. There are a couple of big definitions in Idaho open meeting law that I like to start with because these apply directly to you as legislative authority board members. The first one is deliberation. Deliberation means the receipt or exchange of information or opinion relating to a decision, but shall not include informal or impromptu discussions of a general nature, which do not specifically relate to a matter then pending before the public agency for decision. So it is something that you are going to talk about. Three people getting together and discussing something that is on the agenda outside of the meeting is collusion. You, you don't want to be discussing things that are before the board outside of the public eye. However, there are instances where information can be exchanged without collusion. The director passing information along about something that is coming along is not deliberation. Um, there are these wonderful videos that the Wyoming State Library put up a few years ago called trustee trouble. And then one of them, three county commissioners are meeting for breakfast before the board meet. And they are discussing, discussing about what they're going to do about a certain item that's on the agenda. One of them says, well, if, you know, if this comes up, blah, 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 this is what I'm thinking. And the other one says, well, yeah, this is what I'm thinking too. And they turn and look at the third commissioner who goes, that's not what I'm thinking at all. And you know, these are obviously overblown. They're dram- dramatic versions of things. And the second one turns around and goes, well, about your breakfast, if you just agree with us and we can move on because we have a really long agenda today. And the third one goes, sounds good. I like a free breakfast. And then, you know, the referee comes in, blows the whistle and says, this is what's wrong. That's collusion. Things that you want to discuss in the meeting about a decision need to be in the view of the public. If you're sending an email to each other about a decision and deliberating on that decision, remember that you are creating a public record. Now, as an example, if Vanessa, you talk to Tom about a decision before the board and say, this is the information I have. This is what I'm thinking. And then Tom goes to Rochelle and says, this is what Vanessa told me. This is what we're thinking. You have now colluded. You have now broken the law. This was a decision that is the public's business before the public that you've decided outside of an open meeting. Deliberation is, even if it's just information, you're exchanging information about something that is going to be before the board. Just don't do it outside of this situation, decision. Any determination, action, vote or final disposition upon a motion, proposal, resolution or ordinance or measure on which a vote of a governing body is required at any meeting at which quorum is present, but shall not include those ministerial or administrative actions necessary to carry out a decision previously adopted in a meeting held in compliance with this chapter. So basically, if you are passing along some information or an administrative edict that you have decided on in a meeting, you're fine. But making a decision about even an interpretation of your policy should not be done by you as a singular board member unless you're given that authority specifically about something that's already been adopted. So you wanna be careful about seeming to make a decision for the board outside of this meeting. You can vote, but your power is legislative. So you're only one voice of many at this table specific. But outside of this table, um, you're, you're just another citizen and you can't make decisions that you would make inside of that board meeting. You've all seen this slide. Again, normally don't do three of these all at the same time. Um, transparency, everything's transparent. Everything's in the public eye. When it, when it comes to any decisions that you're making, any meetings that you're having, any deliberations about anything, they're all transparent. Again, some of these are for um those who um are newer trustees. Um, you all know that your notices and agendas have to be posted in accordance with open meeting law for you to actually have a meeting. If notice and agenda are not posted in accordance with Idaho code, then the meeting never happened. Uh, that's been the take on historically from the AG's office is that the meeting never happened. You need to fix that. My not over the top example, but is actually a real example that did happen. Um, there was a, a library board who had violated open meetings law and at that meeting they had appointed their director five years ago. Their director was never legally appointed to be the library director because they violated open meeting law. So they had to go back and in the back of that wonderful open meeting law manual, there is a curing process. They had to go into a meeting and declare, we have violated open meetings law. This, you know, these are our steps forward. They had to consult with an attorney. It costs them time. It costs them money. Um, but they did get it fixed. And fortunately, somebody didn't come along and sue them for violating open meeting law in the interim. They managed to get that violation cured. Because this historically been the opinion of the Attorney General's office, that it's the individuals who violate open meeting law who are liable, not the organization. So the up to twenty-five hundred dollar fine is paid by the individual, not the organization when it comes to those things. Yeah.
Go on the sample slide there. If, if we don't give the forty-eight hours notice.
So this is for a regular meeting. A special meeting is twenty-four.
A regular, if we were to do forty-six hours and have our meeting and do all our decisions.
You're violating. It is violation.
That would the meeting never happened, even though it, minutes are posted and everything.
Yep, yeah.
So we'd have to go back for sure.
Yeah, so in, in the open meetings law manual, there's actually, I can't remember which one of the lawsuits this. Somebody lost a lawsuit over that. Somebody, somebody was standing at the door. Took a picture. And they posted the agenda. And it, it was, it was less, it was like thirty-six hours or something. It wasn't like real close, but it was still one of those things that they went to court and they lost because it wasn't forty-eight hours. It's hours that matter there.
And that's for um.
Regular.
Right, but I mean, that's like posting on the door, like you said, and.
And if you have a web presence.
So both have to be.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, okay, so back to your other example, the, the three people having breakfast. Okay, so the bribe of free breakfast aside, um, what if it was two of the trustee?
They're, they're exchanging information. That's not a quorum.
So you just, oh, oh, that's just, so that's.
That's, that's, I, I, I recommend that people who have breakfast together try to avoid discussing board business that they're going to deliberate on inside of a board meeting. That said, it, it, it's the, it's the quorum that, that really comes into it.
And on that, if three or more of us are talking in the hallway or walk, I mean, are, is, is it really bad because the public can see that we're not in a meeting and we're together? Is, is that something we should?
If, if you're talking about how the Packers are the greatest football team that's ever existed, I am with you a hundred percent. Do not talk about library stuff.
But that we, are we, or is it best practice or is it recommended that we never have three or more of us together just because somebody might see it?
I, I would recommend that because it, it can, it can create, it can create the the feeling of lack of transparency and that can be just as bad as the actual lack of transparency in some cases. Um, the only place that it's really spelled out is a difference in the open meeting law manual or for county commissioners because like two county commissioners get together, that's a quorum. And, you know, I, again, I grew up in a very, very small town. My dad was a county commissioner for years. Uh, one of the other county commissioners and him were really, really good friends. They'd known each other their entire lives and he would get invited to barbecues over there. And his thing always was, and he would tell everybody, he'd go, we don't discuss anything about the county or politics or anything whatsoever. All we do is discuss our cows. And then somebody one time made the snippy remark of, well, you know, there's CAPO ordinance before you guys next month. How, how's that working out for you? You know, it, it's, it's almost impossible to avoid obviously discussing everything. You just wanna keep those things as transparent as possible. And you all are following LSO registration requirements, which means you have to post up your budget and audit on the Legislative Services Office website. Um, this year they're due December first of twenty twenty-four. Last year it was December first of twenty twenty-three. I don't even know if the reporting is open yet um for the LSO. But you guys are on there, so you did it last year, so you're all okay. I just like to point that out because that is part of the um open meeting law requirements.
I know that is.
Um, the Legislative Services Office is um there was an addition to sixty-seven dash four fifty B about the state compiling all of the audits and budgets in one place for people to find as part of the Transparent Idaho um movement um because it's a vast array of. Because it's a vast array of legislation that um affected this. And your entity is required to, to put your budget and your audit up there every year. Your entity is in compliance. I, again, a lot of these slides are created for boards who, board members who are newer. Um, don't, you know, sometimes I come in and it's four new board members and a brand new director. And talking about the LSO is very important because then you're in violation of statute if you don't post there, but you guys are perfectly fine. So your staff have been doing a wonderful job of making sure that your registration requirements are up to date.
Thank you.
Okay, open meeting law questions.
So how do we respond to uh accusations of violation of open meeting law? Cause I, specifically, there was one saying, well, we saw the three of you at this coffee house on this date. And it was a third party presentation and actually like one of us was even there. So, I mean, do we have our attorney respond to that? Or, I mean, should we say anything or not?
So if, if there was violation of open meetings law, you should declare, if you made a decision, if three people from the board made a decision at that meeting, wherever you were, the coffee shop, whatever, you made a decision about library business. You need to discuss that with your attorney. If no wrongdoing was done, that individual who complained, it would be up to them to bring suit against you either through the attorney general's office or through your county prosecutor, which would then investigate the allegations and go from there. That, that's the way that works. Whether you respond publicly or not is completely up to you. You know, that, that is, that is how that will work. So I, I have people, concerned citizens who call me all the time um about things that their library board may or may not be doing, the staff at the library may or may not be doing. And here, I will tell you exactly what I tell them every single time. If you believe that wrongdoing has been done and violations of the law have happened, you need to contact the appropriate authorities, which are in this instance, the county prosecutor or the attorney general's office, who would then open up an investigation and follow it from there. Cause that's, that's what we all do, right? If, if, if somebody's breaking into a car in front of us, we're calling the police. I get, if we see a crime being committed, we are reporting that crime. That's what people do. So if people believe that a crime is committed, they should be reporting that to the appropriate authorities who will then investigate and carry on from there. And again, no, no badger gun here, so.
This case, I think I'm thinking of is some trustees that were accused of being there, weren't even there. So now the public is hearing this accuser saying this. And, and if a big part of the public may believe this accuser.
Right.
So how, how do we respond?
If, if you as a board wanted to respond officially, you would do so inside of this meeting, right? If you as individuals who are elected officials wanted to respond individually outside of this meeting, you would do so. That, that's all I'm saying about the matter is, you know, you, you are all elected officials. Oftentimes elected officials are accused of wrongdoing. Those elected officials normally respond individual. If, if a legislator is accused of some wrongdoing at the state house, normally that legislator responds individually as opposed to the entire legislature responding as a body. That is completely up to you on how you will respond and would ultimately be an agenda item and an action if you want to respond to those allegations. Um, I normally recommend that you just respond individually to those allegations. You know, I was not there, you know, if you were not there, these are untrue, if those are untrue, and from there.
And also I, I think it's important that, um, like what you said before. Um, I mean, if sometimes you want to just like let it go. Um, if that accuser doesn't take that next step, that's enough to show the potentially the community that it didn't really happen. Or it didn't happen in a manner that the person actually took another step. To do an official complaint.
The, the hardest thing about public service, the hardest thing about public service is you can't make everybody happy. And sometimes just by you existing makes some people very, very, very unhappy. A hundred percent approval ratings don't exist for a reason. And, and that, and that's kind of that double edged sword of it, right? Is you want to respond because they're wrong. This, this did not happen. But sometimes not responding says everything you need to in a response as well. Because they have no merit. And as far as the will of the public and how you read that, um, I, I definitely do not have a best practice there. Otherwise.
No, no response can also be interpreted as they must have done it.
Correct. And that's your double edged sword, right? Is is they didn't say anything they're wrong, or they said something they must be twice as wrong? It, it's, you know, o- oftentimes there's that no win situation. And ultimately, it, whether there was wrongdoing or not, is not in the decision sphere of what the sport does. That's in who would investigate and bring charges if they so chose.
Or it could go the other way around. You could sue somebody for slander.
Yeah. You could.
Another option. So on FOIA, can the public, or, or say it was something about open meetings that they, somebody was accusing? And the FOIA asks the library for text messages or?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, the library doesn't control that. The library would have email or the library email. How, how would a public ask?
They, they would ask you to provide that record as far as it came within the sphere of your duties as a trustee. So.
Who, who would make it happen?
Yeah, most likely in that instance, it would be your lawyer doing it because anytime there may be redactions or omissions, you need to have a lawyer involved. Because they're going to know specifically which words can be redacted, which things can be omitted, and they're going to have a record of those things. But yes, people have been subpoenaed for their cellular devices. And the text messages that came off of those that were in, you know, within the sphere of their duties were public.
Well, I guess my question is more, does the public and uh FOIA?
Yeah, they would, to the library. They would be sending it to the library and then the library.
How does the library?
The, the library would then contact you and say, do you have a record of these? Are you able to screenshot them and forward them along or save them and forward them along or whatever?
Can I just give an example? So like, let's say someone said, I want text messages between all trustees about the vacancy. And then they would give a date range. That's kind of like how the requests come in. So as the director, interim director, you receive that, you evaluate it. And then because it's text messages and it's not something we have access to, it would go to the attorney and then we would have to use some sort of data analyst to help us get that information. And then also at the same time, let the person who's requesting it know what the cost would be, and then if we need to proceed. So that's how our process.
Which is a great process. I mean, that's a great process.
And that also is another reason to only use your email.
Yeah.
Your official email.
Mm-hmm. Which is something that I recommend libraries do. I know you all have your own specific library emails, so. And if you're using your personal phone for board business, realize that it could be subpoenaed by the courts and they could pull what they need off of it. And then, again, it has to be within that scope. They aren't going to be pulling things that they can't have all of your records. They can only have those that apply to your duties as a trustee. So they don't get your personal emails or your grocery lists or anything like that. They just get those things within the scope of library business.
So you certainly shouldn't have a personal server in your spare bathroom.
Yeah.
If anybody gets that.
Yeah, you, yeah. Yeah, and just remember that, you know, the, the, the biggest thing to remember about working in a public position is you have nothing to hide and the public needs to know that you have nothing to hide. Cause the second they think you have something to hide, they're going to start digging. And that's going to create more time and headache for you, for your staff, and for them as well. And if you have nothing to hide, there's nothing to be worried about in, in any, in either instance, right? I mean, there's, there's nothing there. And some people will believe you have things to hide when you have nothing to hide. Some people will believe the worst, no matter how often you're trying your best. And that's just a part of your, that's built into all of your salaries, as I like to say.
Give me a raise. Uh, okay, so you said that Wyoming has great videos.
They have wonderful videos on YouTube. They're called the trustee trouble videos. Now, remember that Wyoming statutes are different than ours, but those are some that are created generally with just library stuff in mind, not necessarily specific statutes from Wyoming. Um, they're, they're very good. They, they are, they're quite dated. You're going to see some hairstyles and some fashions you haven't seen in a few years. But, but they're, they're pretty short. Um, you know, um, I tell boards that they're actually something fun uh for a lot of boards to do at the beginning of their board meeting cause they're five to seven minutes long, just watch it and then discuss it. It's kind of a little fun, you know, thing, and then move on from there.
So we had, uh, in Idaho, we had a Teams meeting thing this last spring, I think. Were, they, they did training on open meeting.
Mm-hmm, the, the Idahoans for Openness and Government.
IDOG?
Is that? IDOG, yep.
Is that, that, was that official from Idaho or was that just some?
So they're, they're, they are a, uh, an agency, um, specifically concerned with government transparency. The attorney that they, um, and in full transparency, I'm a member of the board of IDOG. Um, so, um, we had a former assistant attorney general, uh, Mr. Kane come along and he was the main presenter at those. And we work specifically with the Secretary of State and at their office to put those on. So while it is not officially legal advice, much like what I am giving here, it is definitely by people who know what they're talking about.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be better to review in Wyoming because it was?
Well, as far, the, the trustee trouble ones were more about like, this is the definition of general collusion. They're very short. And the library ones are much more focused on the library and, and how to conduct business. Um, they, the library ones are more about, they have a trustee who is doing things like um, coming in and telling staff what to do, um, standing out on the corner with a sandwich board, trying to collect money for the library unofficially. You know, they're, they're, they're talking more about like your general role and conduct as a trustee and less so about specifically the statute. I would definitely recommend, yes, those open meeting sessions and they, they are planned for twenty twenty five as well, this upcoming year. Uh, IDOG is open to have more of them on open meetings law and public records.
What, what does IDOG stand for?
Um, Idahoans for the Openness in Government.
They said that they're an agency, so they're.
They're, no, they're, 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 they're own thing.
Okay.
It's a, it's a private nonprofit.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, uh, the board consists of members of the press, a few other individuals around the state who for transparency and Idaho government, so.
What's the acronym?
IDOG.
Literally IDOG, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we did an excellent job and we don't have any more questions.
I, I like to tell people this is like drinking from a fire hose. I like to just throw things out there. So sometimes it takes a little bit for the water to recede. Um, if you have any questions, please know that I am available to answer them. I, I accept all the questions and if I don't have the answer, I'm going to tell you I don't have the answer. And I'm going to say, consult with your legal counsel or consult with your library staff who's very knowledgeable about these things. Consult with your policies, but I am always available for questions. If you all need anything, I'm here. Um, sometimes, you know, even as a trustee, you just need an ear and to talk to somebody for a little bit, and then you have the answer yourself anyway, as I like to tell people. So, um, please don't hesitate to reach out. Um, genuinely here to help, not to tell you what you're doing wrong or what you're doing right, but just to help you serve your community. And again, thank you all so much for being up here.
Do you have an extra set of the handouts because?
Yes.
I have a new trustee someday soon.
Yes, I actually gave an extra set um to Lindsay and I have um, some business cards here for you all that have my contact information on it. I ask that you uh be a little understanding if you're going to give me a phone call and understand that I'm often traveling all over the state, so returning phone calls is slower than me returning an email, so.
What, what other topics do you get training on or advice about that maybe we're we're needing more? I, I don't know what else we could ask you.
Um, and, and that's the thing is like genuinely, uh, it's under the sun and if I don't have a presentation about it, I make one. So, um, my most common ones are on general roles and responsibilities, which you kind of basically got the rundown of today between these three different PowerPoints. Um, policies and procedures is a big one among boards. Uh, the, the financial side of things is a big one among boards. Um, open meetings law, uh, I have one on de-escalation. Um, I have one on disaster preparedness. Um, yeah. Strategic planning, strategic planning's become a big one uh this year and last year. Um, a lot of, a lot of entities are looking at their strategic plans. Uh, budget levy is another one. As well, while it sounds like that, my D finance is there too, yeah. But, but budget's a completely different whale as far as it goes when it comes to a topic, so.
Time to ask more. Another presenter.
I, I don't have anything prepared today unfortunately with me.
Okay.
Um, and with the thirty two minutes we have left, that's not enough time to tackle any of those that I mentioned. Uh, for instance, my roles and responsibilities comprehensive is three hours.
Oh.
That, that's, that's singular three hour one, so.
Someone coffee?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not budgeted for that one, so.
What about the budget and levy? A long one?
Uh, that, that is a long one as well, yes. Um, cause we get into state tax commission rules, how things are actually calculated, your deadlines, things like that, so that's also pretty involved.
Any further questions?
I don't.
Not right now.
Please don't hesitate to reach out. And then if you would like further training, um, I do stuff via Zoom as well, so. Or Teams or.
What, one other, is, is there any quick advice or any updates you can give us on the new Idaho law? Our full providers?
Yeah, um, which.
How, how are things going?
Which, which in a week will be eighteen dash fifteen seventeen B. Um, yeah. Um, you know your requirements, good policy, good form. Um, I am recommending to people that on your form, you include the entirety of obscene materials, which is the entirety of code eighteen dash fifteen fourteen. As opposed to just the section six on there. The reason for that is because. The reason for that is because the definitions before and after that harmful to minors section actually changed the meaning of the words inside of harmful to minors. And in an effort to give your public the best transparency possible, you want them to have the most information possible on that form when they're filling it out. Um, as far as other things go, um, with that, we, we don't know because it hasn't been implemented yet. That, that's really the big thing where, um, quite honestly, you're seeing policies posted up all over on throughout libraries in Idaho, um, and they range. Um, and people are deciding what to do best for their community and, um, you know, some of the things don't really have definitions. Um, and those trustees are making the best calls that they can as far as what, for instance, the, uh, hot topic is what does the word obtain mean? Does obtain mean that they're checking it out from the library? Does obtain mean they're picking it up off the shelf? You know, what does adults access only mean? What is, what is reasonable steps? Things like that, that, um, quite frankly, uh, people will know when, um, when they're, when a judge makes a determination. So, um, you all know your community best, you know how to create your policies around that. Um, and, and follow from there. Um, some places are expecting, um, people to be challenging stuff on day one. Uh, some places aren't. Um, some lawyers are going, we got this, it's no problem. It's, it's okay, your policy and your form are good and other lawyers are going, we don't know what to do. Um, but you're gonna do your best, so. Um, the, the only other thing that I recommend is people, um, don't pull things and restrict things without having documentation as far as following their policies on such matters. Don't violate your own policy, um, to do something that could be construed because you could get sued the other way as well for restricting First Amendment protective items, and there's a lot of case law on that one, so. You wanna make sure that you're following your policies and following your procedures after they've been updated. And if a member of the public comes in and has a problem with what's on your shelf, you have a form, you can create it for them. Um, there, a lot of libraries are creating a s- a script for their staff that outlines what to do in the event of a challenge. Um, and really that's it, that's, that's all we know right now.
Any further questions? Okay, um, well, I'm all. Yes, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Very informative, I, I like that we have the slides to refer back to.
Yep. Yeah, and if you want those electronically, I can, I can email them as well too.
You can send them and that way we can put them up with our minute.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send them to you, Lindsay, so. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, well, then we will go on break for ten minutes. I'll, I'll be attorney and see if he can, uh, he can participate a little bit earlier than six o'clock, I told him. They're on break. All right, this meeting will come back to order and our next item of business is type of library board of trustees, vacancy and appointment. So I do wanna make sure this is included in minutes because I said it at our last Monday meeting. And, um, anyway, just there officially is a vacancy on the board, one of our trustees resigned. Uh, so the assistant director would correct me if, if I incorrect on anything. Uh, anyway, so you have thirty days to declare that there's a vacancy on the board, which we have now done. Um, and then you have sixty day, or the board has sixty days to appoint someone to fill that vacancy. Uh, according to Robert's Rules of Order, because I wasn't, I didn't find anything in the statute. Um, so Robert's Rules of Order would then probably rule that each trustee may make one nomination as you're limited to make the same, each member is limited to making the same number of nominations as there are positions. So since there's only one position available and we would each be able to make one nomination. Um, let's see, and that would be Thursday. I didn't get it on today's agenda, uh, to have the administration of the oath of office. So we would need to wait until Thursday to do that. That's when we would make our nominations and do our voting, uh, and administer the oath of office. Uh, and then that trustee would be in that position until, uh, next May's, or well, until, uh, June, when the results of next May's election. The new trustee would be in some, uh, if that made any sense, sorry, it's a little convoluted. Uh, this is magic.
I just wanna clarify for the minutes. Um, it will be on the next special board meeting that you will be wanting a new trustee.
I guess that was my plan if everyone else is ready to go with that.
I think that's what I was gonna ask about. You said something about a Thursday or something?
Yeah, we have a meeting this Thursday.
Okay, and that's where we're gonna appoint?
Uh, if everyone's ready to do that, yes. I think I'll, I'll be ready. I just, I need to get a little bit more information from the assistant director to make sure we do it right.
When, when would we, when would each trustee say who they were, um, you know, bringing up for the position?
Uh, during, well, it'll be on next Thursday's agenda.
All of that would be on Thursday?
Yeah. Uh, assistant director?
Um, earlier, uh, Clay Ritter said that the Board of Trustees can't do something like that, but for transparency, he recommended having nominations, um, one meeting and then voting the following meetings so that there's time for a discussion if the board would want to consider that.
And trustee boss?
I'm a little bit surprised or taken back by this. That's how we've given ourselves more time. So today, just telling us what the process is, but I wouldn't think we would do it, do it all in one meeting and then. So you're saying if there are four people nominated, we could each tell the person that we're nominating to come to the meeting so they can be here to take the oath if they get it or? I mean, I mean, it, it just seems a little awkward or unusual. We could do it all in one meeting.
Okay, well, we don't have to, that's, uh, site support, that'd be a, uh, treasurer Robinson.
And that, that may be one of the reasons, um, you have sixty days to do it. And I'm not saying we should take sixty days to do it. But I, I agree that, um, it all happening next Thursday is a little bit, um, quick. Uh, there might be, well, I know that we did hear from a couple of people that are interested, but if, if each trustee is also going to, um, look for somebody that might be interested, um, that might take a, a second or two. So having something at next meeting on Thursday about this, I agree with, but I don't think it should all be done at that meeting.
Yeah, I was just thinking, okay, well, that's how we've done it, treasurer, but the treasurer, um, it's maybe not as complicated as trustee.
Right.
So, yes, trust handling.
So would we theoretically on Thursday say, I nominate X and trustee, um, Robinson does the same thing and all of us, we may or may not have the same person we nominate. And then do we ask for credentials of any sort or any kind of bio? Or do we have a person, have a person give any kind of a one to two, three minute presentation on who they are and why they wanna be a trustee? Or I'm not hundred percent clear. I mean, I have no problem, I've had people call me already, uh, wanted to take the job. And I called one person that I knew in the past had wanted the job or, or the position. And so I wanna make sure I feel clear and the public does. And, um, and I, I, and I going, and then separately going back, I think this was an official declaration then of the vacancy as required by, that you made now, right? With, so that's out there.
Yes, yeah, and I, I made, uh, I made the declaration last month, but, but I didn't ask for it to be put in the minutes.
Okay. So I'm just kinda curious the process we're gonna use because I have no problem finding a person or several persons to nominate, I can find one. Um, so hopefully we pick different people so we have a pool of people to select from. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand how we think we wanna go about the process.
Assistant director?
Um, also at the beginning or right before the start of this meeting, Clay Ritter, um, said that in our bylaws, we don't have steps outlining this. And because of that, it's the board's choice how they want to move forward. And, um, he also recommended that possibly having each candidate write a letter of intent so that those that are voting, um, can understand this, um, person and their interests and so forth. And then, um, yeah, I'm following what it says, that's something to consider to ask each nominee to provide.
Trust Robinson?
And since you obviously read up on this and thank you, uh, so if each board member can recommend one person, that doesn't stop other people from the public coming in on their own to, to say they want the job as well, right?
Um, I mean, you don't really have a procedure outlined, but according to Robert's rules, they have to be nominated by a member and each member can only nominate.
I got you, I got you, okay.
Trust class?
So how did you read about this enough where it says how this is done? We just go around and nominate four people and then, I mean, it's gonna take three of us to, to
Yeah.
select somebody, so each person then just votes for, for their person they nominated. But, but it seems like you would pick one and we would discuss and then you would vote on them. And if it didn't get it, then you nominate another, so I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I, I was thinking that each, uh, nominee would hopefully be present at the meeting and that they would, uh, you know, tell us a little bit about themselves and why they would want it. And, um, so, yeah, uh, trust Robinson?
I understand what the other trustee was saying, um, but you might, I might, um, recommend somebody. Uh, and then when everybody actually spoke, I might be like, well, you know, actually that person's has more qualification or is more available or can put more time in, so, um, I, it's a tough one. This is definitely a tough, um, they had to do this a few years back, we weren't here. But, um, I think they had just a couple of people go out for it.
Uh, trust handling?
Yeah, I think we probably should have a fairly uniform expectation of the candidates, so, um, I can tell my candidate, but personally I would possibly recommend, okay, go ahead and put a resume together and make a presentation and yet trustee plus or trustee Robinson or you just tell the person to show up and they're real, they're not prepared. And, and I think that would be probably not fair to the, the other candidates probably, so. I think they should have some idea, we should have some idea of what kind of structure, what, what are we expecting, um, from a different time? Uh, when I'm calling them again, not candidates, uh, meet nominees, you know, so I think that might be a better way to go, so we should know what we're asking for because one person came in with a, you know, two-page description of all their qualifications and education and, and also have a very polished presentation to give and someone else walks in, says, oh, here I am, I'm ready to take the oath if you take me. And all of that's, I don't think that would look good, I don't think, and I think it, it wouldn't help me to make a good decision as a trustee. So I know very little about your nominee, so to speak, and everybody knows about mine or, or another one of the trustees here. And so I think, I think I'd like to see some way to make it standard as to how we're gonna see each of the different nominees and then, and make an informed decision.
Okay, well, if we did have, you know, one each, that would be four people. So I was thinking we'd give them two minutes, that way, or do you guys wanna give them three minutes? I mean, three minutes is a pretty standard, but, um, three, okay, so we would give them three minutes each.
Up to, up to three.
Yes.
With a bio, maybe a written resume or something?
Us. So a resume?
Resume, a, a letter.
Should be limited to one page or?
Yeah.
So.
Oh, that would be a lever.
Page, okay, and then just, you know, why do you, you be good in this position, so, so I'm trustee.
And then you'll have to ask some questions.
Uh, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
I guess orange, I'm gonna be there.
One at a time, they all peer together doing it?
Um,
Because they could be one.
Yeah.
Well, but it's a public, it's, it's a public meeting.
Oh, that's true.
So.
Well, there's three candidates to leave.
Uh, I don't, we can ask, yeah.
No, just to, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think that would be a good idea.
So they have the same questions and answers.
Did my, uh, trust handling?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, if it's not too short of a timeline, it would be nice not to sit here and read the person's one page, the, um, document at the meeting, maybe they could send it to the assistant library, the, um, acting library director. I could read it in advance of the meeting and then there are one to three, whatever, three minute, more than three minute discussion by the person. And maybe leave it open for questions, um, but I, I don't, I won't properly be able to sit here and read someone's, uh, document as to why. I, I would think there'd be two or three questions on there, that's all, maybe why do you want the job? What qualifications do you have? Uh, very simple and basic, it's a freelance, whatever they wanna stick on one sheet of paper, not to exceed a certain size font maybe, so you can write twenty, you know, a ridiculous number of pages, but, but just something, just some idea of the, the, I don't, I don't, I didn't have a, a script, I didn't, I didn't know where we were going with this discussion, so it was very generic on the, on the, um, agenda.
Trust class?
I, I think we really need to have a process on how to do it. Um, it's if we just, we hear the four and then we each vote for a one, uh, each, one vote for each person or something, are we gonna break that? You, you should have something like, you know, tournament, two against two or one against one and whoever gets the most votes of that is the winner of that one. And then do some kind of a tournament thing where you can put two people against each other and somebody get more than just one vote each. And then those, the winners of that, they go against each other. So I, you're gonna have to find something, a way to, um, at the standstill, everybody get one vote.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's right.
Um, if I could offer a tool, maybe would to be used, a forced ranking, um, which is what we do for some of our job interviews, where after each person that speaks, you would rank them first and then like if the next person is better, they go to first and the second person goes. The first person goes to second and then ultimately end with your number one for each of the four of you. That could be, oh, a tool, it's not a tournament, but it is a fair tool.
Sounds like that, uh, ranked choice voting, is that what you're saying? Uh, trust handling?
Would it, would it be good if we, again, asked for a document not to exceed one page? We should probably write down what you want, that we wanna know why you want the job and what qualifications you have and anything else you wanna add. Maybe those are three big categories and then maybe we listen to that, maybe we can ask some questions and then maybe we can take a vote. Because we have sixty days and if we can't come to a conclusion on a vote, well, then we kick it off and table it, figure it out again in another meeting.
Yeah, because it's possible that one person would just say, okay, it's, you know, making it harder and maybe they didn't really wanna do it that much in the first place. So, um, okay, so, so then if we're nominating on Thursday, um, should we have them? Speak at that time or save that for like our regular meeting?
I think we should nominate and then send out the, I don't know, gosh. I was gonna say nominate them and then send, send the information. If, if it's gonna be a question-answer thing for them to fill out. But I don't know.
They just write a, their own summary.
Well, I've heard kind of both, so I don't care which one. If it's one where they have questions. Or if it's just.
Questions.
Right.
I, I don't want to make that pathetic question so they all have to answer. But it's, it's gonna somewhere.
And then I don't know also, what if a person doesn't want to provide a sheet of paper on whatever it is? Or they don't, or they, they'll do that, but they can't get in here for any kind of a presentation. Presentation is kind of a big name, but basically a comment on why they want the job, what to bring to the table. If they can't make that, I guess we take that into consideration when we're voting, I don't know, but uh. It's a tough one. I don't think there's any guidelines on this particular process.
Yeah, there, there's not. So I would say that, you know, it's not required, but that's what we're thinking this time would be. I mean, we're up to three minutes and. Up to one page. I don't think it'd be the, uh, trustee Blass.
I, I think it's important that they, that we all kind of get to meet them. Hear what they say, and I think we should each go and ask one question of them after they talk.
Right, so probably not required, but if someone doesn't show up and doesn't write anything in, then we're probably not gonna bother them.
True.
So, trustee Robinson?
And now that I'm looking at the schedule, so we have the June twenty-seventh, which is Thursday. Uh, and then our next meeting isn't until July eighteenth. So is that why you were trying to kind of get it done on the twenty-seventh? Maybe if we. Like the other trustee was saying, if we nominate and have the people there on June twenty-seventh, but maybe some can't, um. Then we, then we'd have to have another one, but before the eighteenth. So that they could be heard. Are you concerned about the, the fact that the next meeting's not till July eighteenth? That's, I guess that's what I'm asking. Um.
I, I, I just, I kind of wanted to get someone on board so that they could be a part of. Um, the things that we're discussing in our next several meetings. Give input.
Well, we can try. From the next meeting.
So there's also no guarantee that all of us will come up with someone. I mean, it, it's possible that only one person has a nominee. And, and then we could just vote on it Thursday. It, it's not likely, but it's possible. Okay, so we'll put it all on the agenda for Thursday, just recognizing that it's not likely to all happen Thursday. And then I can just. So.
That sounds good.
Would it make any difference if trustee Blass nominates the same person I do? Or the same person trustee Robinson does? I guess that just means we have fewer contenders then. So I, I don't know who you guys find, but um, I have somebody in mind, but they may or may not want the job. I don't know. And there are lots of options out there, but do we just take a chance that we don't know who each of us are gonna be nominating then?
It's do.
Yeah, I'm uh, like ninety-nine point nine percent sure on. One person, but I, I still like haven't made, so I'm not ready to make that right now, if that's what I asked.
All right, so it's, it's possible you can make the same nomination. Anywhere about, or you just.
Yeah, i- if one person nominates, then another person doesn't have to.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Okay, everything clear as much?
So at the meeting on the twenty-seventh, you're only doing nominations. The person is not having to bring their three minutes of comments and the answer to the questions that we're asking. And the reason I ask is that tomorrow, um, I'm assuming I would be the one who's. Putting this paper together and emailing it out after I get your nominations. Tomorrow's also our payday, so like there isn't a lot of free time and it's also budget preparation. So what I'm saying is I don't know that I have time to coordinate all of this for you. As assistant director, if that's how we're going.
Uh, trustee Blass?
The, the way I see it is, we're not asking the assistant director to do anything. We have a nomination we want to make, we, it's up to us to tell the person to come. Bring your piece of paper or, or email it to us or. And be here to answer questions. So I don't want the question written out beforehand and sent. This is the question, if we want to ask, this is what I see, if we would ask, get to ask a question. What I don't like is having four of them here and hearing the questions beforehand. That's why, and I see, when I did this with N I C, they had us all secluded. They're sequestered, they brought us in one time. Otherwise, if they're asking the same question of everybody. You've already formulated your answer and the first person didn't get a chance to.
Yeah, well, it, it might be that you have a question for one person and that was someone else. And I just really don't see how that's even possible within, it'd be in a public meeting. So, uh, trustee Robinson?
Yeah, and they're, I mean, I might be reading this wrong, but they're not gotcha questions. You know, they're, that's not what we're trying to do to the, the people that are being nominated. Uh, so in that way, I don't think it really matters if, if somebody hears the question beforehand. Because you're not trying to catch somebody up on, you know, like trip them up on their answer. If you're, we're literally looking for a person best qualified to fill a seat.
But you give, you give, you, it's unfair to the first person who doesn't get a chance to prepare and then the last person just be able to think of their answer.
These are gonna be some tough questions they're asking, I guess.
Right, and I also was not looking at it as, this is something that you guys need to prepare. It's just something that we deal with our, you know, preferred nominee. Uh, trustee Hamley?
I wanna go back. So only sure, um, so individually, each of us as trustees are going to go ahead and contact. I assume our nominee and ask them or test them with what exactly. And, and then, and then, then what we're gonna do is, and then entertain a short presentation from each one of those at Thursday's meeting. So, so how about the written document? Is it acceptable? If, if they want to do it or we want it, can they submit those at least to the acting director and have them forward to the, to the board? As a read ahead, I think that's, that's not a lot of task, you just to forward it out to the board.
You're gonna provide them my contact information.
I think that would be good if we did that, that just don't work other than forwarding the email out. And so we can have, uh, a guy, uh.
They could send it to the chair too.
But I can't send that to everyone. It's because it's not, it's best practice is not to do that, so it doesn't look like I'm violating the open meeting law, so I think.
So, so the nominee that we individually are gonna work with. They need to send us their statement or their one page. We send it to the acting director and she sends them all out at once when she gets them. But don't, the, the nominee should just send it to us. And then, or if we're gonna nominate somebody, work with us and then we send it to the director. Because the director has no idea if, you know, six people end up writing into her and saying, hey. I'm being nominated here, my stuff. She doesn't know who nominated who.
Okay. But clarify, so we get our own nominees, we give them our own CLN email address. Ask them to go ahead and send us a document and just, I assume, so they're somewhat similar, says they want the job. Here's what they're, here's why they want it, and here's my qualifications. Is that, is that enough? So that they're sort of similar over going here, because otherwise we're gonna get somebody that, who knows, tells us what they did fifty years ago, has something to do with it. I kind of think it should be, you know, I want, I, I'd like this job as a trustee. Here's why I want it and here's what I can bring to the table maybe, or is it a, is it a freelance document, do whatever they want?
Uh, I, I would think freelance to a degree, but it would be wise to, you know, explain why they think that they'd be good in the position.
And what, what, it would be whatever we ask our nominee potentially to put on their document, I guess. Or what they choose and whatever.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think they have to send it to our CLN email if they want to give a thumb drive. Whatever we get it, when we get it, we send it to the director.
And she sends it out to everybody else.
Don't make it so complicated. They can only send it to us that way.
By whatever method.
We, but we're the ones.
Give it to us.
You know, and we email it.
I appreciate the clarity.
So I'm trying, I'm struggling myself. I want to make sure that we know what I'm asking you to do and that you're not doing something different than what I'm doing, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, business director or business manager?
I can read what I think you guys are talking about. A vacancy on the board has been declared. The board has thirty days to announce the vacancy and sixty days to fill the vacancies. Each trustee will be able to nominate one name for the vacancy. The appointed trustee will serve the remainder of the vacant term. Nominations will take place at the special meeting on June twenty-seventh. Each nominee will present their interest to the board for up to three minutes. Provide a one-page document with their interest and qualifications and be prepared to answer questions from the board.
Beautiful.
Okay, and this will be, this will be for Thursday, so I can review it because I can't read that fast, but.
You have Janelle send it to me and then I will.
All right, uh, trustee Robinson?
Okay, so I know it's a open meeting and um, it's all, the nominees will be here. But when we actually decide who we're going to choose, is that at the meeting as well? Or is, how does that happen?
Uh, if we feel like we're ready to vote, then we can do it Thursday. And if we feel like we're not ready to vote, then we better.
And that deliberation's at the open meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And very simple and, you know. Deform all that, don't want to trash people. Uh, okay, we, we are now late.
I can't answer the question as far as, I did look it up in the open meetings manual and. Filling a trustee position or appointing one, you cannot go to executive session for that particular thing. I wasn't sure. I found it's, it's written here specifically written out that way, so. Otherwise, it'd be nice to say, oh, we don't like this person for this reason, or we do like them for that reason behind closed doors. But I'm not gonna sit here and say, I don't like your nominee for this reason and trash them in public.
Yeah, it's better to focus on the qualities of the one that you do like, but yeah. All right, so that concludes this portion and uh, our next item is. Executive session presented to Idaho code seventy-four, two oh six, one A. Or actually, before we do that, uh, our legal has. Legal has logged on. Uh, okay, so I would entertain a motion to go into the executive session presented to Idaho code seventy-four, two oh six, one A. Assistant Blass?
I move to go into executive session, Christian Idaho, bill seventy-four, two oh six, one A.
Right, it has been moved to go into executive session presented to Idaho code seventy-four, two oh six, one A, a roll call vote.
Robinson, I.
Hamley, I.
I'm saying I.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, it is unanimous. You're now running to executive session presented to Idaho code seventy-four, two oh six, one A.
It's not, it's not the only people that can be nominated, but people that are known to you. It's better to have a public process where people can say, I'm interested.
Okay, and we are back from executive session. Uh, we have an item that we have no action to take. So we'll move on to number seven, set special and regular meeting dates. I did extend, or well, I asked uh, the assistant director to extend the reservation for the room. In case they wanted to have uh, executive session. So instead of two to four on this coming Thursday, it would be two to five. We would need to do the appointing of a, uh, appointing and. Uh, possibly appointing the trustee. Uh, yes, assistant director?
Um, if you're going to do the appointing of a trustee and have executive session. We have to remember that the purpose of this meeting on the twenty-seventh is all about budget.
Right.
And so we need um, at least two hours, so I just, and if we need more than that, I just don't want to be tied down.
Yeah, I absolutely, two, two hours for sure, under budget. Okay, so two side guys?
That's what I had written down.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it had originally been said two to five, but then it didn't get reserved that way, so. So that has been corrected.
And that's a two.
It's two to five, but the other long schedule we got says Hayden, so it's not Hayden or it is Hayden?
Oh, it is Hayden, right?
Oh, I thought it was postponed or so.
Give me one second.
Yeah.
I'll take postponed if you got it.
I'll take what?
Postponed if you got it.
Yeah, I would, that's postponed for me as well. But I'm good with the A.
It is reserved for Hayden, but I can look and see if this is available. And um, when we do the agenda, it would have the meeting location.
Okay. Okay, so two to five on Thursday, uh, there's no other special. Dates to schedule. We move on to the next, next item that we're super excited about. Okay, the objection, we are moving on to item number eight, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, yeah, it has been moved to adjourn. All this favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is unanimous. We are now adjourned.